Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I'm going to open up the regular scheduled meeting for April 16th, 2024. I've asked Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the prayer and Commissioner Mobley to lead us in the pledge, so if you would all please rise.
Let us pray. God our Father in heaven, we come dear God, humble before your presence. God, we come, Lord, thanking you for how you blessed us and you kept us alive, God, while we slumming and slept all last night. And God, early this morning, you woke us up, dear God. Able to use and active our limbs, able to go about our daily activities with God, and now, Lord, you allowed us to be here tonight. We come, dear God, grateful, dear God, knowing that you are God, and we thank for your son, Jesus Christ, who hung, bled, and died, that we may have life and life more abundantly. Now, Lord, look on us, dear God, as a board, dear God, as we go forth, dear God, to handle the business on this agenda and for the betterment of this community. Ask of God that you help us to make the right decisions, help us do the thing that's right, dear God. And God asks you to bless the people that's here, dear God. They will all come together, God, in the meekness, ominous of spirit. They will help to do the thing that's needful for this county, for this community. And God asks you to look on our nation, dear God, blessed, oh, God. And God, bring those hearts and minds together, dear God, in the federal, the state, and under our local and county levels. Then we, oh, God, do the best for our people. And we give you the praise and glory, for in Christ we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under our God, indivisible, and omnipotent, with justice and justice.
Welcome, everyone. We have a full house of, there's a few folks still coming in, so if you would just make room for them. I believe there's a couple of seats still up front. I believe those are available. Anyone needing a seat, there's two more seats, there you go. Welcome, Mr. Blue. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have the April 2nd, 2024, regular board meeting and the April 4th, 2024, RFQ 2024-03 bid tabulation. Any questions, comments, concerns from commissioners on the minutes?
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. We do have a time-specific item that has three of those that have to be heard at 5:35. It's 5:33. The next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. I do know, because I've spoken to a lot of you, a bunch of you guys are here to speak about the RV parks. That item is item, agenda number 17. So, under public concern and comments, I'd ask you guys to hold those and come up and let's talk about it when we're talking about RV parks under item 17, if that's okay with you guys. Anybody else wishing to speak from the public that is not here to speak about RV parks? You guys come on up, make your, make, Mr. Broders, he's a regular. You guys come on up. Name and address for the record.
I'm Keith Broders at 201 Ranchera Street Northwest here in Live Oak. What I am going to announce is that I'm going to be teaching another class on the Constitution. I wanted to thank Brother Perkins for appearing in my last session. This particular one is going to be on the 27th of this month, on Saturday, at 2:00. And we're going to be focusing on the two most important articles in the Constitution. For those of you that may not know or may have forgotten, there are seven articles in the Constitution, and Article 1 and Article 2 are the most important. And what those two articles tell us is what powers have we granted to Congress? I don't think they have a clue. There is a total of 18 delegated powers, and that's what we're going to be going over at the meeting, also the powers of the President. Does anybody here know how many powers the President has delegated to him? One for every finger on your hand. There's five powers that have been granted to the President. Any power that is not delegated is prohibited. So, Congress and the President are both operating outside of their constitutional authority, and as long as we sit back and allow them to get away with it, they're going to get away with it. So, we need to take responsibility. We have rights, but we also have responsibilities, and we can't very well defend our Constitution if we don't know what our rights are to begin with. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Broders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Dean Smahill. I'm at 1612540th Street in Live Oak. I'm not sure, the item that I wanted to speak about is, I believe, item 11 on your agenda. Do I speak now, or do I?
You'll get an opportunity, under that public hearing, you'll get an opportunity to speak about that. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anyone, I think I saw three hands. Yes, sir, Mr. Monroe, right? Yes, sir. Come on up. Don't think your matter is about RV parks.
No, it's not.
Okay.
But it's, it should be a concern for every single person sitting in here.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Jesse Monroe. I live at 3552282nd Terrace in Branford. Last time I came in here, the last meeting, I brought up how Suwannee Valley was installing smart meters on people's homes. How many of you have a smart meter on your home now? Most of you probably do and don't even know it. Did Suwannee Valley give you, inform you, or give you consent on the dangers from these smart meters? No. They probably didn't, because I didn't get notified either. How many of you own a cellphone on you, have a cellphone on you right now? Right? Microwave at home, smart TV, Wi-Fi, all of these devices work on the same frequencies. They produce a microwave, okay? And so, I'm going to talk to you about these dangers, because you're not informed on these, and I think the public should be informed. Here's a stack of studies I'd like to pass on to you individuals, so you can follow along if you'd like, and to understand that I am not making this stuff up. So, how do, I'm going to hit specifically on two things, smart meters and cellphone towers, because we can't control those. I can buy a cellphone if I want it, I can have Wi-Fi if I want it, I can buy a smart TV if I want it, but I don't have a say on where these cellphone towers go, and I don't have a say if a smart meter is getting put on my house, it seems like. So, I'm going to explain how they work. The smart meter runs off of producing a microwave frequency, just like your microwave at home. It does not cook your food. It heats up the water molecules inside of that food. It microwaves them, and it hits a certain frequency, and it starts to cause those water molecules to vibrate. It causes a thermal heating of the cells or the water molecules inside the food. That's what it does to your body. We are 70% water. Every living being, every living tree, every plant, this planet is made up of 70% water. So, we are being microwaved. Again, everybody most likely has a cellphone on them. It's not just one time being radiated by one cellphone. It's 150 of you sitting here right now. That's 150 times that we are being radiated. The Wi-Fi routers that are sitting here, smart meters on this building, according to the studies, the smart meters emit a frequency that within 10 feet of that smart meter, you are getting more radio frequencies than a cellphone tower. And according to the FCC, you just have to stand in front of a cellphone tower for a few minutes to get your daily dose of radiation. Okay? So, these are the things that we are being inundated with. Our bodies are being microwaved, and it's causing adverse health effects on us. When you heat up the cells in the body, it causes the cells to die off. And what happens is that your body starts to attack those cells, because they become waste. That's why you get cancerous tumors, okay? Your body is encapsulating it. And when you can't sit there and discharge from it or get away from it, you start getting a toxic overload of these EMFs. So, it's going to cause you to start having adverse reactions. How many of you have trouble sleeping at night? Get dizzy, lightheaded, maybe suffer from heart palpitations, high blood pressure, blood clots, arthritis, cancer, lymphomas, colon cancer, joint problems? All of those things that I am saying, and even more, are from radiation poisoning. How long have we been allowing this technology to be put in place without even realizing? Okay? We allow these technologies to be introduced into our house, but we're not getting consent on the dangers of it. And we can't hold the telecommunications industries responsible for it, according to the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Okay? So, who are we going to have fight for us who don't want this type of technology? I think it should be an opt-out program. Most states have adopted an opt-out program for these smart meters, and these smart meters bounce from house to house to house to house to a repeater. Every night, according to the tech that came out, about midnight, it collects the data in your home. Okay? If you don't unplug your smart TV, it's collecting data on it. There have been studies that have been shown that the Wi-Fi that comes from your cellphones, your Wi-Fi routers, the smart meters, and the cellphone towers can be used to track and trace you in your own home and put 3D models out, so they can do an imprint on it. And if you don't know, the Constitution is trying to get changed by the House with Act 702, I believe, where they're trying to get away with the Fourth Amendment for certain seizures and not the warrants to spy on you. So, I'm just saying, well, what if you got to hide if you're not doing anything wrong? That's not the point. If you know what the smart city is, the smart grid is coming on, that's what this is for. There have been states here in the United States and other countries that have had people's powers controlled, the powers controlled by these smart meters. They have went in and adjusted the thermostats. So, I ask that you guys, please, start being informed. When you have to approve a cell tower, know that a mile and a half out, that's what these cellphones or cellphone towers are actually putting radiation out. A mile and a half. So, off of 27, where that new cellphone tower is being built, there's probably 100, 150 people that live within a one and a half mile radius of that cellphone tower. Where they knocked on their door, told that they're going to get radiated, it's not going to make you sick from just one time. It's the toxic overload. It's the long-term exposure of it. So, I ask you guys, maybe take that into consideration, because according to our state statute, it is our individual right to maintain our health, and we might need a little guidance from our government officials through finance and education. That means they need to tell us of this stuff, just like you guys with the RV park. You probably won't turn, told everything, right? When they approved this stuff. We should not be afraid of the telecommunications industries suing this county, because we don't want to put a cellphone tower up because of people's health. We should be able to say no, because it causes adverse health effects. The studies are out there, and I ask you guys, if you want to do your own input or your own research on this, look at who's funding the studies. When they first did cellphone studies, Nokia is the one who started it. They started using humans on the trials and realized that the cellphones were so dangerous that they stopped immediately and started using test dummies to test cellphones. Okay? If you don't believe what I'm saying, that it causes these adverse health effects, I used to weigh 280 pounds. Okay? I changed everything that I did and got away from this stuff, this technology. That's why we moved out to Branford, the middle of nowhere. It's just a nice place to live. In fact, that's their logo, right? It's a great place to live. I don't see anybody, but now I have a cellphone tower that's within that limits from my house, and I'm being told that I have to have a smart meter, or my power is going to get cut off. Hopefully, that'll get taken care of. If you, challenge to all of you, unplug all of your smart devices at night and see how you sleep. Do it for 30 days, and I guarantee you, your body, your health, will just thank you for it. And all of these ailments and stuff that you've been told has been coming on from other things, maybe look into the devices that you're wearing on your body, around your body, or what you're putting inside your body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Can I speak, I'd like to follow up what he just?
Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Anayancy Van De Ver. I live on 22152 County Road 250. Just wanted to add something now that he brought it out, and everything that he said is totally true, and I commend everybody to start researching, because he mentioned Fourth Amendment. And one of the reasons I want to move out of this county is because I noticed a lot of civilians and drones flying every night around my property, that block was 225, 217, I think it's 217, and all around the west, Dolby Park, that area. So, I asked a sheriff, who is, I think I saw him somewhere, to his face, he tells me in my face that he doesn't have any drones, that maybe it's private drone, right? So, a few months later, I decided to ask the county, the sheriff's office, how many drones do you have here in this county? And a few days later, I got a, you know, this is through the FOIA request, I was told they only have one, and I have the information here. I don't know what kind of drone, but it's a $10,000 drone, one. But every night, I count over 20, 20 drones. So, somebody's violating my rights for me private in my property. So, I'd like to know who you got drone, the tax office got drone, who else got drone? How many FOIA requests I have to request to find out who is spying on me right now? And they're all over the county, especially west. You pass half of 250 county, all the way to Dolby Park. I document, I have videos and stuff. I'd be happy to share them with you. I got pictures, you know, there's no privacy whatsoever. The reason I moved to this county and this, I bought that property, which now it feels like I also got to fight the mobile part, RV, whatever is being built, because I just heard about it last night, nobody informed me, is the reason I now need to move. I came here for privacy and peace, and now I got to leave, because I had neither. I have no privacy, no right to property, apparently, because now they're going to bill right on my backyard. Every morning at 5:00 AM, I hear noises, and I'm asking neighbors that live on 225, what's going on there? You know?
Yes, ma'am.
So, for months, I can't sleep. I can't sleep at night, because I see the drones flying around. It's like a normal thing. I'm walking around to the bathroom and looking through the window, there's, there's gone, there's gone one, you know? And I got neighbors here that can confirm that. We all seen it. And that's one topic we wanted to discuss, actually, we wanted to come here, we came here for the RV discussion, but we have a list of things we want to discuss. The violation of people's privacy, the right to be secure, you know, based on the Fourth Amendment, that's being violated right now as we speak. Like I said, I counted over 20 drones. So, I can go and request FOIA, and I ask everybody here to start asking each government office, how many drones they have. They're listening to your conversation, and he's right, the gentleman about the meter. I asked the day they switched my internet back in January, why are you switching the meters? And they didn't answer whatsoever. And I had that in my mind, but I was busy and stuff, I'm doing other stuff, but I had the same concern he had, you know, within microwave day and night, and they're collecting data as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we have two time-specific items that we'll move to, item number 11 and item number 12 on the agenda. At 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider special permit request number SP-24-04-01 by Gabriel LaRosa and Anna Fernandez, to be granted a special permit under Section 14.6 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for Intensive Agricultural to construct 10 poultry houses on properties on A1, Mr. Ron Meeks. We're going to do item number 12 simultaneously, and that is, item number 12 is, at 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider a special permit request number SP-24-04-02 by Inalv, Inalvus Hernandez, to be granted a special permit under Section 14.6 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for Intensive Agriculture to construct eight poultry houses on properties on A1, Mr. Ron Meeks. Mr. Meeks, I spoke to you and Mr. Morrison before the meeting, I believe there's a little bit of legality questions here. You or Mr. Morrison want to hit on that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Since this, these two chicken house matters came to my attention late last week, I've looked into the matter, and I have some questions whether or not this board has jurisdiction, given the Right to Farm Act, and I want to make sure that everything's being done in accordance with the applicable statutes. And so, given that, I'm asking to give me time to look into the procedures for how everything's being done within zoning, as well as each two applications in particular, to make sure that when we do have the, when, when evidence is taken and this board renders a decision, it's done in accordance with the law, or if they're not subject to this board, that we don't erroneously have a hearing and then possibly put ourselves in legal hot water. So, I'm asking that this get, these matters get tabled and reset to the first meeting in May.
Can we continue those, Mr. Meeks, and avoid having to re-advertise?
As long as, within six weeks.
Okay, so we will do this on the first scheduled board meeting in May, which is, what's that date? May the 7th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so both of these, both of these public hearings will be reheard on May the 7th. There was a gentleman here wishing to speak, so apparently there's some legality issues. I would welcome you back on the 7th. I know you wanted to speak about this. You're welcome to speak tonight if you want, but we're not going to really hear any evidence or make any decisions.
Actually, because it's a quasi-judicial hearing, we can't take any evidence.
Okay, so no evidence. So, if you would, come back on May the 7th, and we're going to go through these. You're welcome to stay, I'm not telling you to leave, but we'll, we'll talk about these then.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to be on the safe side, if we could do that with board action, to have it continue?
Okay. So, I need a motion to?
So, move.
Have a motion to continue this, these two hearings on May the 7th. I have a motion by Commissioner Perkins, a second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, Mr. Clerk. Okay, item number 13, it's also a time-specific, and then we'll jump back to the consent. At 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold the second of two public hearings to consider the adoption of an ordinance, LDR-24-01, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend Section 14.11 of the Land Development Regulations by adding Section 14.11B-11. All tower, all tower construction must provide a generator for backup for a minimum 48 hours. Co-location on an existing tower must be connected to the generator on site or provide their current generator, to provide their own generator to serve their equipment for the same 48-hour minimum. Mr. Ron Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members.
Do you swear upon testament you give us the truth, the whole truth, not the truth of God?
I do. This would be the second of two required public hearings to adopt text change to the Land Development Regulations. During the first hearing that we had, we had the discussion along the timeframe for the backup. We have added that language, and that is part of the ordinance that is before the board tonight for adoption. This came up after the hurricane, so we were, we were without cellular service here for extended period of time. So, we looked at requiring the backup generation as mandatory, so they know that going in, rather than it being added as a condition of an approval. At the last meeting, we did discuss the timeframe, and it was decided upon by this commission that we would put the 48-hour time limit in there, and that is part of the ordinance that you have before you. So, at this time, we would just be looking for the board for approval of that and adoption of that ordinance in the same, and the file has previously been entered into the files as, as in the official record.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Any board members have any questions of Mr. Meeks? This is not an action item, but is there anyone wishing, on the public wishing to At this time, we'll close public comment. Any board discussion? There will be a second, there will be a second hearing on this one. As you know, we have to have two of these to amend the LDRs.
This is the second.
Oh, this is the second.
This is the second. So, this one, you did not have, you didn't have action before last. We had the consensus that we would go with the 48 hours, so this would be the adoption of the language, adding the 48 hours.
Okay. Mistaken. We, so, okay, so we just did the public comment. No one wishing to speak. Any board discussion? None. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Do I have a motion to accept the LDR amendment by Commissioner White?
Second.
Second by Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll close that public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Y'all, I apologize for it being hot tonight. Mr. Musgrove informed us that normally we have two units working here, one of which is not working, so it's a little warm, and we got a full house, so it's even hotter. But if anybody wants to switch seats with me, I'll do it.
I got a fan.
We'll go back, so now we need to go back to where we left off, now that we got the time-specific out of the way, which will be the consent agenda. There's items number 2 through 10 on the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, any of the board members wish to remove or discuss anything? Normally, you tell me before, but I didn't hear of those, so all I need is a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is regular.
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, Mr. Clerk. Okay, constitutional officers. Any constitutional officers wishing to speak tonight? Any staff members wishing to speak tonight? None. Any commissioner items?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
I do have one young lady that want to share something, that she's, can definitely do some things here in, in Swanee County, and she'd like to do, to speak tonight, briefly on something there, if permitted. Her name is, Ms. Chanel Harris, and is in the city somewhat, but it will be also with something with the county, but she'd like to come for the board.
Okay, is she here tonight wishing to speak? There, okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Chanel Harris. I am the founder of Sincere.
Address.
Name and address.
Living at Live Oak.
Just your business address.
Oh, we're based in Tallahassee, 625 East Tennessee Street in Tallahassee, Florida. But who knows, maybe soon I'll become a part of the Swanee County community. We are looking to, we are a network of women's wellness and birthing centers that will be expanding across the state of Florida, and we're looking to do our first site here in Live Oak. We're really excited to be able to provide comprehensive care for women, so primary care, breast care, you can have your mammograms done here, prenatal care, postnatal care, as well as birthing opportunities. We will seek advanced birthing center certifications, which means that the women will be able to have natural births or medical assisted births or cesarean sections right here near your community. Our focus is being able to serve all women, regardless of their ability to pay. So, if you have commercial, Medicaid, or no insurance, you will not be turned away. You will be able to come and receive quality care at our center. We are looking to bring specialty clinicians here that you would normally have to travel to Gainesville or Jacksonville, that can come in and provide the care here, so the women don't have to take off of work or travel extensively and be away from their family. They can receive that care right here in their community. Once we find our permanent home, which I hope will be soon, we will start looking within the community to hire. We will do some training, some certifications, so that the women of the community or anyone in the community can come in and be a part of what we're looking to build here, which is a healthcare facility where you can receive care. But we'll also have resources, so care coordination, we'll have classes, we will partner with a lot of the community partners that exist here and be able to bring everyone into our hub. We'll have a space where everyone's welcome. We'll have behavioral health services as well for women and their family members, but it will be anchored around the women to help support them just through life, but especially focused on a lot of the things that impact women before they get pregnant, while they're pregnant, and even after they're pregnant. So, our primary focus, again, is to just build a community of healthy women, but also to have healthy moms and healthy babies and a healthy generation here. So, super excited to come to Swanee County. It's been very welcoming. Thank you, Mr. Perkins, for everything, Ken Weaver. We've been just super excited, just left the Health Department, meeting with a coalition of people that are focused on the health priorities of the county, and so, we're excited to be a part of that big coalition of people that are looking to make this community healthy. Sure.
Do you do terminations or abortions?
No. Our focus is helping women have healthy babies, delivering healthy babies, and having healthy women of all ages. So, primarily like teen, adolescents primarily, because you still kind of see pediatricians at that age, all the way through aging. So, we'll provide, again, breast care services, we'll have certified nurses, midwives, we'll have MDs, nurse practitioners, and physician assistants.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, what was the name? Excuse me.
Sincere Care Centers.
Okay, that's what it, thank you.
Have you nailed down a location yet and a potential date of opening?
So, we are working on the location. Initially, we, I thought that we had a location, but as I meet with partners and look at the data, I think that there's a slightly bigger need than we initially anticipated.
Don't announce if it'll affect your negotiations, sir. Don't announce if it'll affect your negotiations, sir.
Yeah, no. So.
Welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Next item on the agenda, is there, were there any other commissioner items? Okay. No. Next item is county attorney items. Mr. Attorney, do you have any?
I'll defer to other items on the agenda here.
County attorney deferred, that's a first.
Second. Last time too.
Next item, number 14. Discuss with possible board action, conservation technician, Mr. Garrett McCray from F-, Mr. Bart Wilder from FDACs. Welcome, guys. Name and address for the record.
Garrett McCray, 999 Southwest County Road, 320 and May. So, I'm the program administrator for the Swannie County Conservation District. And the item you have before you, we enter into contracts with the Florida Department of Ag to provide technicians to help producers, farmers, if you will, implement best management practices throughout Swannie County. We have technicians in Lafayette County as well, but they bring a lot of good cost-share dollars with them from the Florida Department of Ag to these producers to help implement these best management practices. And the item you have before you here is what's happened is, all of these technicians are done through, they are county employees, but they're county employees that are done through a contract with FDACs, Florida Department of Ag, instead of being FDACs employees. And so, you've got different conservation districts or solar water boards throughout the state that hire these technicians. And what FDACs is trying to do at this point, they've noticed that there was a discrepancy between counties and other parts of the state where the pay rates were at. So, what they are trying to do now is try and get them all basically leveled up to the same. Different counties, different policies, you know, and all for different pay rates. So, what you have before you today is, right now, we have one technician. We normally have two. I'm not sure if y'all are aware or not, but our second technician that we had just hired in October, great young guy, actually passed away here not too long ago. So, right now, we've only got one, but the main goal here is to get his pay rate up to what other technicians in this area are at, based on the amount of time he's been on the job. So, that's what we're looking for. The main takeaway here is, this doesn't affect the county budget at all, because through this contract, which you have in front of you, it's got the budget sheets and everything, as a conservation district, we reimburse the county 100% for that technician's position. The main issue was, because of where our technicians are categorized, if you will, within the county, this rate that we're looking at is above that category, that range for that category. You know, that's why we're here today, but like I said, it's 100% reimbursed. We do monthly reports to FDACs, and we turn around and reimburse the county for their salary through those contracts. Right now, the contract that you're looking at is good through June of 2025. Those are typically three-year contracts, so there's, you know, there's nothing saying that we'll get a new contract, but there's nothing saying we won't. Those technicians are very important to the work that we do as a conservation district in working with FDACs and implementing those practices on the farm. Typically, they're doing three-year contracts, and as long as, as long as we have that contract, that is 100% reimbursed to the county.
Okay. Mr. Wilder, anything to add there?
My name is Barton Wilder. Address 19010 Southwest 13th Avenue, Newbury, Florida. I just want to thank the county for being a partnership with this. These funding has to be re-appropriated by the legislature every three years. We've had technicians out of parts of states been on board since 1999, but it allows us to keep, retain employees better doing other personnel services with no benefits. So, it doesn't get Florida retirement, county benefits, but again, gets reimbursed to the county, so there's no cost to them. So, it's been a great benefit. It's a good partnership with the district and the county, and we appreciate you guys' support for this.
Thank you, Mr. Wilder. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Perkins.
You said that the county would be reimbursed at 100%. When does that reimbursement will be sent back to the county?
We reimburse usually once a month, whenever we do our report. So, it's either once a month or, at worst case scenario, quarterly, we reimburse.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I have a motion? Have a motion by Commissioner Mobley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. five to zero, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Wilder, Mr. McCray.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Y'all are free to go. If you so choose, we won't take it disrespectful.
All right.
It's a little warm in here. So, we will move to, that was 13, my right.
That was 14.
That was 14. Item number 15. Discuss with possible board action, final plat approval of Broken Pines subdivision. Mr. Ron Meeks, Development Services Director, 15. All right.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a final plat approval of a minor subdivision known as Broken Pines subdivision. Location is off of 169th Road, which is also known as Rocky Sink Road. Property is found in section 27, township two south, range 12 east. The size of the lots are 5.01 acres. The lot, the subdivision contains a total of two lots. We don't typically normally see a two-lot subdivision, but this was part of a larger parent parcel that there were already a couple divisions off of, so that meant that any further division had to be part of a record plat in order for those lots to be buildable. So, that was the need for the filing of the plat. Property is located in an agricultural one zoning district, which does have a minimum of five acres. The density is one dwelling unit per five acres. The plat has been prepared in accordance with the land development regulations. It's been reviewed to be in compliance with land development regulations. It's also been reviewed to be in compliance with chapter 177 Florida statutes. So, your clerk has a copy of the Mylar plat for the chairman's signature if the board so chooses to approve the final plat of this subdivision having accorded.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Any questions from the board? Mr. Meeks?
Here, I'm going. Motion to approve, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Have a motion to approve. And a second by, who was that?
Perkins.
By Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, Mr. Clerk. Item number, thank you, Mr. Meeks. Item number 16. Discuss with possible board action, the appointment of two members to the North Florida Water Utility Authority.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrison.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed to appoint-
You're speaking to the mic, Mr. Morrison.
Before we appoint members to the board, you'll see on your desk, I brought it up, I got it late this afternoon, this is the newest version of the interlocal agreement that we previously approved, for which the board members to the North Florida Water Utility Authority would be needed. Essentially, what's happened since the last agreement for the substantive changes are, before, this was an agreement between Columbia, Swannie, and Hamilton County. Hamilton County has dropped out for the time being, so this version of the agreement omits Hamilton, but it does have a mechanism to allow new counties in, because Hamilton intends to enter sometime in the future, and it creates a mechanism for them to do so. Other than that, it's substantively identical to the agreement previously executed by this particular board. This is an exact copy of the agreement that is going to be executed by Columbia County, so I would ask the board to execute this agreement, so that way, both of our versions are one-for-one between us and Columbia County.
So, Mr. Morrison, this is the exact same agreement. The only amendment is, Hamilton County has chosen at this time not to participate.
Correct, and it adds a mechanism for adding counties in the future, should they want to join the conglomerate.
Okay. Any questions? I believe you're going to need board action on this, since it's amended contract.
Correct. It's a new, it's treated as a new agreement.
Correct. Any questions from the board?
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Perkins to approve.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Now, Mr. Scott, would you like to speak about the appointment of the two members to the Water Authority we just, or we're just now starting to form?
Per the agreement, basically, both counties will appoint two members from the commission to serve. Once that group will form notice and meet, then they will appoint one additional to have a total of five members. So, Swannie County needs to appoint two members from the commission to serve on the board.
Well, Mr. Scott, my, my take on it would be, definitely needs to be Commissioner White, because he's been involved with the formation of this board since the kind of beginning, and it talks about forming this, forming this group. If there's any other board members, like, any other recommendations, I would entertain those, but I would definitely nominate Mr. White as one of those representatives. And I know what y'all are looking at me for. I can feel it, and it's going to be, the chairman does this a lot already, so just let him do it too.
I nominate.
I knew it was coming, I just went ahead.
I nominated Mobley.
Oh, Mobley, okay. I like that. Got a motion and a second from Mobley and White. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, Mobley, congratulations, sir. I like it. Thank you, Commissioner White.
I'll go say, I'll go put you out there.
I've been there, brother. This chairmanship is, it can be overwhelming. Okay. That handles item number 16, is that right, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The part we've all been waiting for. He's taking his jacket off. Item number 17. Discuss RV parks. So, before we get started, I have, and I'm just, they're not in any particular order, but when we open the Florida public comment, I'll just go through these. Anybody, Mr. Martin, you got one there too, so I'll get yours as well. And anyone that didn't fill one out, it's not a big deal, you can still come up and speak, even though you didn't fill one out, we'll let you speak as well. So, first off, I'm just going to say, this is in my district, I've probably spoken to half of you guys in this room over the last two weeks. I wish I would have spoken to you guys a month ago. I had no idea that you didn't know about this. I understand, I've heard it over and over and over again. I wish I had have known that you didn't know. And here we are today, at this point, where our, this board's hands are kind of tied on what we can do, because we can't rehear a case we've already ruled on. And I'm going to let the county attorney talk on that, because I don't want to, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not going to get bogged down in legalities, because that's not my job, but I just want to apologize to all of you that I didn't know that you didn't know. And here we, and here we are today.
Let's ask the boss. No, how are we going to start with notify?
Where he's going to talk about all of that, and then if you have questions, just come to the podium, so we can do the name and address, and we'll hear every single one of you that wants to speak, I promise. So, Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to, I've spoken with, I think, all of you at this point, I'm about this matter, and let me start off with saying, unfortunately, the job of the attorney is to be the one who says no, because it's a lot easier if it can be, if your job is to say yes, because a lot, my phone would not have rung nearly as long, and I would not have been on the phone nearly as long if my job was to say yes.
Can you speak up a little bit?
So, anyway, here's what I wanted to do. At the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, you asked me to basically make double sure that, can the commission reconsider or rehear a previously granted special permit application? I told you then, the answer was no. You told me to, again, go back and make sure, and I'm going to direct my comments to the audience here to make it a little bit more, I'm trying to make this as user-friendly as I can. So, county commissions are a weird entity under Florida law. If y'all remember back to when y'all were middle schoolers, we learned about the three branches of government, right? The executive, the legislative, judicial, right? County commissions are the only entity that does all three, all right? So, they have executive power, they appoint the head of, the executive head of the county, the county administrator, they oversee them, and they can overrule them. That's executing executive authority. Most of the time, they're sitting here in their legislative capacity, passing ordinances. We saw them do it earlier with Mr. Meeks. They wanted to pass an overweight county attorney's appreciation day. They could do that. But they could also repeal it. There's nothing in the world that stops them from passing it and undoing it. They can do that all the time. So, when they're passing ordinances, resolutions, whatever, they're acting legislatively. Then we have the third category in which they also act, which is judicially. So, under the law, we use the firm, the phrase quasi-executive, quasi-judicial, and quasi-legislative, simply because they're not the legislature, they're not the judicial branch, this isn't a courthouse. So, we use the word quasi just to say that it's a board that does several things. But county commissions are the only entity that does all three. And so, the way we look at what can and can't be done in particular matters depends entirely on, in what capacity is the board acting? So, if we were here and there was a rule that had been passed by the board, a zoning ordinance that everybody was this upset about and they didn't like, it is absolutely possible for this board to repeal it. That's exercising their legislative power. They can do that. But when they're acting in their quasi-judicial capacity, the easiest way to think about this is, they are literally, I'm not being, I'm not joking when I say that, sitting here is five judges. And the same, literally, the same rules that apply to the judge that sits in the Swannie County courthouse applies to the five of them. So, before we move on to talking about RV parks, think about the context of a court case, because that is 100% how you have to look at how this case has to be analyzed in the context of a rehearing. Now, has anybody here not been to court on something? People have been to court on child custody matters, criminal matters, all kinds of cases come before the court. And a fundamental tenet, a fundamental premise, is that a court or a judge cannot reconsider their own decision. You can appeal them, right? You can take them all the way up to the Supreme Court, but that judge isn't going to rehear their own decision. So, for example, if you had a family law case, and you're in a bitter divorce, and the judge awards custody to one family member, the judge can't get up two months later and say, you know, I got that wrong, I'm going to give it to Dad, and just enter an order and do it. The reason for it is, cases have to be final, right? You can appeal it, you can take it to a higher court, but it can't come before the same judge, the judge can't simply readdress its own decision, even if a party asks it to. Now, that's not a perfect analogy. Those who are in court processes will say, well, there's times when that can happen, and I'm going to say that's correct, because there are rules, statutes, et cetera, which can authorize that in very specific circumstances. But, the fundamental rule is, if you were just to guess, can a judge reconsider its own case? No. And it makes sense, again, when you think about it in the context of a child custody case, there has to be finality. And again, if you got a problem with what the judge did, it's not the judge that does it, you move it up to the Court of Appeal. So, the same idea applies, it's exactly the same idea that applies when the county commission is sitting as a quasi-judicial body. They are literally five judges who are taking evidence, who are receiving evidence, and who vote on what to do. And when that decision is made, they are acting as a judicial body. And because they are a judicial body and acting as judges, they do not have the authority on their own to reconsider their act. And I'm going to put this as plainly as I can. Some of you, lots of you, have gotten in touch with your commissioners and me about, they did this wrong, it violates, it's within 500, five miles of an RV park, we didn't get notice, you didn't publish it. I understand everything you all are saying, and I'm not arguing with anything you're saying, but I'm going to give you the hypothetical. If, let's say, we had people, we weren't going to do it completely wrong, and the board hears a petition with no notice for an RV park that we're going to put in next to another one, which we all know is, violates the LDRs, all right? And they do it in violation of the sunshine law. They don't meet, they just do it. Complete bad actors. Any one of you could file with the court for relief, to say, they did it wrong, we're appealing what they did. They violated their LDRs, they violated the notice statutes, and they violated all of the applicable ways you can do this, and you'd win. That's the appellate process. That's how these things go. But what would never happen, and cannot happen, is for this board to do it on its own and say, boy, what did we do? We screwed up, let's reconsider that. No. I'd be saying the same thing were I sitting here in that situation, that you can't. My job is to say no. Sometimes, even when that's the bad thing to say- My job is to say no, sometimes, even when that's the bad thing to say, given the audience of people. I understand that. But here's what I want to point out, and the reason this gets us to that point. And, a little bit of this is Adam the citizen, not necessarily Adam the attorney, and then I'll defer. I reduced all this to writing, it's part of your packet, you can read it for yourself. I cite to the authority, the case law, the statutes, you don't have to take my word for anything. But, the county commission, according to the constitution of the state of Florida, must follow the applicable statutes, must, it's in our constitution. There is no statutory mechanism for a rehearing. And so, what would happen if this board were to do what a lot of you have been asking you to do, and just reopen the case, it would literally be violating the statute and the constitution. The same constitution, which all of them took an oath to follow. And I'm not trying to be overly dramatic, but it literally is just that black and white. So, I'm not here to talk about right and wrong. The people who talk about right and wrong, they meet on Sunday. That's not the lawyer. All right? At the end of the day, what my job is, is to make sure the board acts legally. And were the board to rehear or reconsider this case, it would, about the RV park, and I understand, appreciate, and absolutely frankly agree with most of the points everybody here is making, that doesn't change the legality of our current situation. So, with that being said, and I can go through the consequences to you all individually, Mr. Chairman, if we need to go that far, but I just want to make it crystal clear, that it's not a matter of want to, it's a matter of can't. And, just so you're not taking my word for it, since becoming the county attorney, I've joined the Florida Association of Counties, the Florida Association of County Attorneys. I've spoken with them. Mr. Chairman, I know you want me to say, "Yes, you can reconsider this." As someone who works for y'all and can get fired by y'all, I would like to be able to say, "Yes, you can do this." But that's not the job of the attorney. I've written down the statutory authority and the reason for it, but it's not only my opinion, it's the opinion of the Florida Association of Counties, and quite frankly, it's not, this is as close to fact as they come, when it comes to legal matters. This is not close. The board cannot reopen its own case. The only mechanism to appeal what this board did, is to go forward with the appellate process, which is the province of the courts, not the board.
Appeal to who?
The judge.
Hey, let's, we'll do one at a time, so y'all just, when we open the Florida public comment, come up here, else we'll have total chaos, lots of questions, and no one will get a good answer.
So, again, I can go through, piecemeal my memo, Mr. Chairman, but I think, I mean, the crux of what you wanted me to do, I've addressed.
Frankly, Mr. Morrison, when I asked you the question of, "What if we do it anyway, outside of violating the constitution?" What were the individual consequences that you told me?
All right, and again, I do put this in the memorandum, so, I'm terrible at remembering stuff, so when you get the agenda, you can go through, and you can look at it, it's there in black and white. There's three consequences that are gonna attach, if you were to grant this relief. Again, other than citizen Adam saying, "Don't violate the constitution," which you said you wouldn't. The first thing you're gonna do is, the judge, if you were to be sued by the DePraters, who you were, who had been given the relief you requested, they can go to court, and the judge is gonna say, "You already gave it to them, give it back." You're gonna do it anyway. The second thing that can happen, so you're gonna be made to do it anyway by the court, 'cause you've already done the court action. The second thing that could happen is, when y'all are up here acting as county commissioners, most of the time you have immunity from actions you take. In case you screw something up, get something wrong, there's immunity under the statutes. However, there's an exception for that, when county commissions, or most elected officials, act with what's called wanton disregard for human rights or property rights. And there's case law which says, in the context of zoning, where a, an appellate court affirmed, where the, the board had said one thing, the person had done it, and then they came before the board for, to say, "Okay," and they yanked it away, and they said that was a violation of property rights. So, in the context here, when the board authorized Mr. DePrater rightfully or wrongfully, I'm not even addressing that, but absolutely gave him the property right to use his property that way, if the board were to turn around and just take it back, that is now depriving him of that property right, and acting with reckless disregard under that case. Then the last thing is, because it's also technically a civil rights violation, 'cause again, you'd be taking away a property right without due process, 'cause the due process has already been given by having the hearing, the county would be on the hook for attorney's fees. So, if you chose to ignore the advice of the attorney, and y'all chose to do it anyway, just to run through the top hits here, the court is gonna, can reimpose it anyway and make you do it, y'all could be paying for this out of your own pocket, in terms of damages, and the county could be paying the attorney's fees to pay them, to make them, make you guys do it anyway. So, it's a bad situation, I'm not pretending otherwise, but the consequences to the board are significant, should the board choose to ignore the attorney's device and, advice and choose to take that action anyway.
So, Mr. Morrison, I think, I think the question that maybe a lot of the citizens here have, is, is what is the process for them to appeal? How, how, how would someone do that? And I know that you're not here to give them legal advice, but, I mean, there's probably a lot of folks that just, you know, wouldn't know where to start.
I understand.
Nor would I.
So, there are statutes, I do cite them, for the benefit of everybody, again, that's why I put it in black and white, it's in writing. There is a statute, there's a mechanism to file for, to file an appeal with the circuit court, you can do it through what's called sursorory, or through the various writs that are there, they're all laid out in the statute. So, I don't remember it off the top of my head, and I'm not looking at it, but that would be where you would look. It is a slightly complicated process, I would encourage someone to use an attorney, but there's no requirement, doesn't have to be. So, but, that's where I would refer you to. But, that would be the process, the same as if we were, again, to go back to it, if somebody had been appearing, the term is pro se, by themselves, in the family law hearing, where they lost custody of their child, it's still, they're still in appellate process, it doesn't change the fact that they were pro se, the judge can't reconsider its own motion, its own, its own ruling.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Morrison?
No, I think you made it quite plain and clear.
Before we open the Florida public comment, I'm just gonna tell you, get you guys a little bit of where we're at, in case I haven't spoken to y'all individually. So, on the signage, the board is in the process of changing the signs, they'll, they'll be a little larger, and they'll be brighter in color, I believe, red and white, is the, have we received those in yet? I know they're ordered. Okay. So, the signage will be changing, I do know that, on the, on the color and the size. So, we have addressed that, I don't disagree with you guys, maybe the color wasn't the best choice, as far as visibility, but that's happening.
Is that against the law?
Mr. Morrison, hold your questions for when you get up here, take them down, I promise y'all, I'll answer them, and we'll get, and we'll get with, and we'll get with them. But if we start jumping around, it's gonna get crazy. Is there anything else that we have made changes on, Mr. Scott, that I'm forgetting?
We plan to, where needed, we'll be adding additional signs, if there's two adjoining roads, or whatever, for.
So, a sign will be placed on, on all roads at the property, with the special permit of zoning.
Right.
Any road it touches, we'll be getting a sign.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrison.
One other thing, and I've just, I basically deposed Mr. Meeks for about two and a half hours, in getting all this together, but one of the other things that is going to change, is the county website is gonna accurately reflect the applications that people can download, is the ones that are on there, are more than 10 years old.
Okay. All right. Is there any, are there any other changes that I'm missing, Mr. Hale, White, Mobley, Perkins, anything else y'all, Mr. Scott? Okay. All right, now, we will open the Florida public comment. I'm just gonna go through these as I have them, and this is how they were handed to me. So, we'll start first. Mr. Brian Metzger. Welcome, sir. Name and address for the podium, please, sir.
Thank you for hearing us, Brian Metzger, 110-54225th Road, Live Oak, Florida.
Yes, sir.
And I am, I mean, I understand what you said, and in regards to that, my intake is, or my thought of it, is they've already broken the LDRs, which is already against the Florida statutes, which is already against the constitution. Really, guys, decades-old ATA ACV called Tresca Park, they are operational with 15 sites. All I had to do was stop by there Friday, stop, stop at the information center, "Hey, I'm not a part of this, can I park an RV?" Yes, you don't have to be a member of the RV. They are actively open, 15 sites, $25 for 30 amp, $50, or $30 for 50 amp. They had seven people camped there, none of them actually were members or certified with, or part of. So, the information you got there, something smells rotten in Denmark about that one. Number two, no definition of an RV park, was also mentioned, I hate to tell you this, chapter 513 of the Florida State statutes, mobile home and recreational vehicle parks, .01 definitions, 11, recreational vehicle park means a place set aside and offered by a person for either direct or indirect remuneration of the owner, the lease or operator of such a place for the parking, accommodation, or rental of more than five spots. Tresca Park has 15. I teach English, but my mind tells me 15 is more than five. We have an RV park already on the books, the statutes say that you guys can't put one within five miles, you've already broken your own statutes, your own ordinances. Florida statutes, as far as the LDRs that were overlooked, says, statute 163.3202, number one, that the municipality or the county shall adopt or amend and enforce LDRs. Doesn't mean you get to pick and choose which ones you're gonna look at, because there's also a sheet that was passed out, as part of what, on the memorandum on April 8th, that Attorney Morrison put this as the findings that were found. There are seven things on here, great, they're all positive. The problem with those seven things is that they don't cover all of the things that are on there for the LDRs. They don't cover number four, the proposed use to be advantageous to the neighborhood, the impact of the proposed use upon the living conditions of the neighborhood, the impact of the proposed use upon property values in adjacent areas. My property rights are being impacted by this decision, speaking of property rights, Mr. Attorney. The impact of the proposed use with regard to the scale of needs to the neighborhood. That park in Dowling Park, they're never full. The 15 spots, what, no, well, makes you think we need another 139. And last but not least, this past two weeks, every adult I talk to, I ask them just one question, if I were to open a 139-lot commercial RV, RV park, I didn't say commercial, what do you think the zoning would be? You wanna guess 100% of the responses? Commercial. It is a commercial aspect, I realize our LDRs allow it, but it is a commercial aspect, and what I'm asking, what I'm saying to you is, commercial impacts everybody around. Commissioner Land, I'm gonna pick on you.
I've, I've, I've got big shoulders, I realize.
I know you do, but I'm gonna pick on you, but the rest of you, I hope, are listening to this. Did you even attempt to contact any of the 15 single-family residences that were within a half a mile of that place?
You asking me a question?
I am asking you a question.
Personally, no, sir, I did not, I've never.
And you made it to where they had to come to you.
I've never, actually, let me finish, I've actually never, and I've asked every other board member, and the board members that preceded me, if they ever went door-to-door, and physically informed folks of zoning changes, or special permit requests, I have not gotten an answer, yes, yet. So, if, that was a lie, they told it, I've never done that, no, sir, and I didn't do it this time, to be honest with you, I wouldn't tell you a story.
Again, the other four need to take notice of this, because the past two meetings show you that all you had to do was show your face somewhere around that, and you would've gotten a response like this, the night you guys decided to vote on it.
But, Mr. Metzger.
You know, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not finished.
Well, you're well over your three minutes, but I'm gonna let you keep going. No, it's fine, go ahead.
All I'm saying is.
No, go ahead.
Something is rotten in Denmark, and the rest of you, the stink is getting attached to you, because somebody here didn't do the job they should have.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Next up is, Mr. Nancy Metzger. Welcome, ma'am, name and address for the record.
My name's Nancy Metzger, and our address is 110-54225th Road, Live Oak, Florida.
Yes, ma'am.
I thank you for this opportunity to address the board, and I have a couple of different concerns about this issue. I am an English teacher, I teach 137 students every day. I teach them several things. One, words matter. Two, details matter. Every one of the students in our public school system is in testing in the month of April and May, and all of those tests are them paying attention to words. Do they understand the words? Can they follow those instructions? On the weekends, my husband and I often administer ACT tests and SAT tests. If those students cannot read the words and follow the instructions, they're, they are out of the test. I really wanna encourage county commissioners to get your communication together. The website that I looked at said 2024, this is April of 2024, there's been plenty of time to update the information, because that's one of your main means of communicating with the citizens. This is about lack of communication and not following instructions. When I teach my English students, they have to pass the, they have to follow the instructions, they have to pass the test to graduate from our public school system. And here we are, people not reading the instructions, not following the instructions, and that's why we're all here tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I really wanna encourage you to get all your communication together. And, Mr. Attorney, chances are really good that you're paid a whole lot more than public school teacher. I wanna really encourage you to step up your game on communication. It is your job to communicate to the community, it's not our job to seek the information of things we don't even know are coming up. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Next up, I got, I think it's Mark, Mark Kippulkepper.
I'm in here, uh, Z, Z, great.
KP, K-I-P-P-U-L?
K-I-P-P-U-L.
Okay, I got L there.
I live right next to it.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Name and address, name and address for the record.
22182 County Road 250, Live Oak, Florida.
Welcome.
So, I'm right next to it, okay? I didn't know anything about it, but I'm not gonna address that issue, there's a lot of people that are. But I've got a master's of public administration, okay, which a lot of people don't. So, I haven't seen an environmental impact statement, as far as what 139 RVs are gonna do, I haven't seen what you're gonna do to the black water of 139 RVs, that they're gonna dump it on the ground, I haven't seen what the effect is on the wells, and I live right next to it, and so do a bunch of other people, what that's gonna do. I've also trash road studies, come on, guys, this is not high school anymore, this is what people do when you have development. You've gotta look at all these things, and I don't see any of this done. All right? I don't know why, okay, this is just common business. I mean, this is when you go to put in a development, you look at road studies, you look at environmental studies, you're looking, what am I gonna do with the garbage, and you're looking, how am I gonna police this? You look at, you know, the wells, you look at all sorts of stuff, okay? And as far as getting impacted, yeah, my land is getting impacted, okay? I have just as much right as my neighbor does to put one in, okay, to not put one in. And so, the issue is, okay, yes, we're gonna appeal it, the question I have to you is, how much time do we have to appeal it? Because usually, what is the timeline? You have 30 days, 60 days, six months? I don't know. So, how long does it take? Even if you go pro se, are you hiring an attorney? Or are the Florida Department of Environmental Protection comes in, and decides, "Well, you know what, this is something I wanna get involved with," 'cause I do work for the Department of Florida. All right, so, how much, how much time is it? Okay.
Since the action would be adverse to the board, I legally cannot give you legal advice.
It's not an opinion! For example, if you want to appeal, okay, you mentioned a regular case, the judge has said you got 60 days, 30 days to appeal, you want an attorney, what will be handed to you? Okay? If it was a criminal case, even in a murder conviction, you got 30 days to appeal. All right, so, I, I don't understand why there's not a time, it's, it's gotta be statute, why there's not a time that, well, how long does it take? You know, so, I mean, that's why. You know, so, I mean, that's what I'm saying, gentlemen, a lot of basic needs have not been answered, unless you guys have the answers, unless they put that on the application, okay, I don't want my well contaminated, thank you, okay, with black water, how is even that going to be handled? Is there going to be, you know, like a sewer system, 139 people? 139, you know, units? How is even that going to be handled? Where my well doesn't get affected? As far as them getting water, as far as the black water that's coming out of those, out of those, oh, is that what the thing is? Okay, feel like I'm on one of those presidential things, but I'm going to talk water. So how is that going to be handled? How come that even wasn't addressed? Okay, and that's the question, I got it, you know, as far as the application, Department of Health has to come in and look at, and look at, you know, how they're going to get rid of the waste, right? It's a health issue. It's going to be floating, I mean, I don't know, guys, I'm living next to this, all right, so I don't even know how it hasn't even been handled, all right, as far as that goes. You put a mobile home in, you got to put in a, you know.
Mr. Kipper.
What? You know, I don't understand.
So, Mr. Kipper?
Yes.
No, over here.
Where?
Me.
Oh, you, okay.
Yes, sir. All of your black water and your wastewater questions, that'll all be permitted through the Department of Health, that's done, that's done kind of retro, if you will, no one's going to go permit black water and wastewater prior to getting a permit to put in any type of, any type of development.
Sewer system.
Yeah, so they're going to get the, they're going to get the, they're going to get the permit first, and then the second step would be the environmental and that type of stuff, because it's no use to do a septic permit if you don't have the permit to develop the property, so all that'll be done through the Department of Health.
All right, that's fine, okay, well, that's good to know, I don't, did anybody know that, how that was going to be handled, a lot of questions, I didn't know it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what about the track?
That'll all be done, commercial pickup.
Okay, what about the traffic study?
That was done prior to.
That was done?
Yes, sir, there was, it was part of the agenda packet, there was some information in regards to traffic, but listen, I understand your frustrations.
I got what he's saying.
I really do, but, I mean, we can sit here all night, and we can answer your questions, but the fact is, is...
I understand what he was saying, okay, you're off the hook, I got it, so you've got to appeal it, okay, obviously, if you don't like what you're doing.
Go back over there, so, so, all this is being recorded, so if you stay there...
Then I'm asking the attorney, well, how long do you have to deal? Do you have 30 days, do you have 60 days, do you have six months? You know, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I guess I have to ask an attorney to find out how long it takes to appeal.
If you get with me afterwards, I'm sure you and I can figure that out on the phone.
Okay, well, yeah, just give me your number, I mean, you're...
I'll get with you afterwards.
All right, so I don't want to pick up any more.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Nick, next, next person I have is, all I have is a first name, and it's Bobby on 225th. Bobby on 225th. I'm assuming you're Bobby. Welcome, sir. Welcome, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Bobby Graffum, I live just off 225th on 132nd.
Welcome.
Thanks. Yeah, so, I'm just here to voice my opinion like the rest of you all, I moved up here a couple of years ago, I'm from South Florida, I lived there 20 years, and I'm a super yacht captain, I've been living on boats for the last 20 years after that, and I just wanted to move up here to get a quiet place, have a little homestead, start a family, I got some cows, I got some chickens, I got my little 10 acres, and I didn't move up here to, you know, be in these sort of RV parks, I have, I'm an RV owner myself, I built one myself, traveled all over the country, I don't even stay in these places when I'm traveling, I like peace and quiet, you know, these things are all lined up, eight foot apart, shades drawn, it's just trouble, so the idea that I'm going to have to live on the same street as one is obviously troubling, yeah, and that's pretty much it. You know, Dowling Park, just in general, I don't think has the infrastructure, you know, we got, what, two small grocers, we got Family Dollars down, so we got Dollar General, we got ACV Grocer, yeah, and I just don't see, I mean, how long do you want to wait for a beer at J. Beers? Come on. Yeah, I just think it's too small, just to get my voice out there, that's pretty much it, just wanted to be able to speak, thanks for letting me speak.
And we appreciate you coming.
Appreciate you speaking.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Rego, Mr. William Rego, have you next? Welcome, sir, name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Rego, I live at 22177 Lancaster Road, which is right across the street from the park, I have lots of woods there, but I think they're going to come there and cut my trees down and get firewood for the RV park, so I get, being retired law, I guess I can shoot them on my property, right?
I'm not telling you to.
No, but I'm just saying, attorney, being on my property, cutting their trees down, they're going to take it for firewood, I guess I can shoot them then, that way, right? But my question is, if they did a study in the traffic, this morning, yesterday, my wife and I, we took a golf cart ride, we went down, and, you know, we saw the RV at the Village, there's a little RV park there, like the gentleman said, 15 RVs, I think it was two at the time, but we drove down, and this is about, I'm going to say 5:50 maybe, and we were out there in the golf cart, and we get that little bend there, it gets where the Bueller Road, which is 225, and you got these timber trucks flying down the road there, and I'm saying, wow, this is going to be nice, when you come around that corner, when there's RVs trying to pull into that park, these guys don't stop for dogs, as you can see, the dogs, the deers are dead on that road, 250, up and down that road, they can't stop, they're coming down at 60, 65 mile an hour, being retired law, I watch them, I think, look at these guys, and they're coming down there with that little slight curve there, I don't know why they're going to put an entrance on that side, I'm not trying to get people at 225 pissed off at me, but at least got a little bit more of a chance to get out of the way, slowing down on that road, but 2250 is now, it used to be a nice paved road when I first moved here, almost 17 years ago, now it's a crappy road, it's glumpy, bumpy, you come off that road, thank God I have a truck, but, I mean, you have a nice ride, you might as well just have a new suspension for that every couple of years, because the road is really getting bad.
The good news is, the first half of that is, I've submitted that to FDOT, and this board backed me up on it, and next year, 2025, from Clayland, which is 193rd Road, back to 51, you should start seeing some dirt work on that, DOT is going to assist us and give us a little over $7 million to get it repaid.
I was pointing at Patches, I did it.
Yes, sir.
He was doing some undergrounding because it was sinking.
That's right, there was some settling going on.
Those areas are nice, you know, when you go over those roads, and you, no, you don't look that far from me, I'm just saying, it's a very, very busy road for 139.
Yes, sir.
RVs that we have, we don't have that many houses around there. Why, why do we have to riffraff? I mean, I just, I, the gentleman who had the degree, whatever he had, a degree, and he's right, who's not going to say they're going to get his well water, go over there and take water from his well. You know, I'm just kind of frustrated because the signage, I live right across the street, I never saw the sign, never. And I'm telling, I called you the other day, and I says, I never saw it, and I don't bother nobody, I pay my taxes on time, I leave everybody alone, say hi to my neighbors, when I see them, they ask me help, I help them, but this is ridiculous, to put something like this on, in the Swanee County, which is supposed to be like a nice little country place, you know, and you're going to put RVs with riffraffs, might make it a meth lab, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Rego. Next, I have Anna Campoa.
I use my single name on that. I'm Nancy Van Dever, I live right behind Mark, the gentleman that just spoke a couple minutes ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's right there, I'm pretty much...
If you would, state your name and address again for the record, just because he'll get on to me.
All right, okay, Anna Yancy Van Dever, 22152, County Road 250. And as I was saying, I was right behind Mark, and looking at the map, which I was not aware until last night, somebody called me about it, is right, it's like looking at the RVs, right there, in front of me. So, I had a different speech, but since I heard Mr. Robison is speaking about legally, legalities, questions, do you have any documents you can share with me and the people here to take home, to start looking at it? Mark raised a good question about the timeframe to sue, in many cases, like for employment discrimination, for example, that was my last lawsuit, pro se, and I won, you've got 90 days to sue, once you are notified. None of you have notified me or informed me prior to approving such a development. So to me, and even the gentleman that was sitting here, he got a good point too, and raised a case about constitutionality and the state laws, et cetera, so I'd like to know if you have any documents for us to take home, to go over. Like I said, I was not informed, I am actually trying to sell my property for the last six months, I haven't gotten an offer that I was pleased with, and now I look back, and I don't care now, I probably need to get out of here as soon as possible, because your approval of this development will depreciate my property. Nobody's going to buy my property, knowing that right in front of them, and to the right side, is going to be RVs all over the place. So now I have to legally disclose potentially the fact that there's an RV park being built in the area, and that's going to affect my rights to live there, obviously, if I want to stay, or to try to sell it at the right price. So anybody has a document for me to take home, to review? And I, I won my last case, and I'm going to warn you, if I dig in into the county, as well as each individual who passed this resolution, I'm going to sue you on your official and personal capacity. So I am going to dig in, I'm going to take names now, to each one with a face, because you will get a lawsuit.
Excuse me, ma'am, excuse me.
They're on the website, they're on the website, our pictures are on the website.
Yeah, I want to make sure, or here, when you hear me.
All right.
I ain't going to put up with that.
Next up.
There's something else called injunction, so if you want to get together with me, the gentleman who's here has the law, we need to file an injunction immediately, so if we get the numbers, so each one of us gather signatures, names and numbers, and we go and file an injunction to stop the development. The four have to hear us first, before whoever owns that property can develop anything, so remember that, injunction, that's the first thing.
Mr. Sean Hembry? Welcome, sir, name and address for the record.
Sean Hembry, 22919128 path, live off 225th. Every one of you should be ashamed of yourself. I've sat here and been to county commission meetings, where I have people that go ahead and stand up and research, and as a commissioner, speak up and say nay, but it was probably 5-0 vote, I would imagine, right? All you boys go along with each other, to say yes. Well, you should do some research, and really look how this impacts, because I've heard many laws that have been cited, about laws that maybe your predecessors voted in, that none of you took into account, correct? The lawyer sits over there, he wants to be quiet, he won't speak up and tell us how long we have, but I'm sure all of you gentlemen are quite aware you're going to have a class action lawsuit, or a lawsuit of some sorts, for an injunction because of this, because many of you, y'all may have grown up here, I didn't grow up in this place, I grew up in a trailer park that was going to be what this is, and let me tell you the crimes as a kid you have to watch. Our sheriff's sitting here, another gentleman over here, I watched domestic violence, I watched rape, I watched people break into people's homes, I watched a federal raid on a house next door to me. My parents fought diligently to make sure we got out of that, and that I was educated, and that's what we did. And I took my family out of the city and brought them here for the quality of life that you all are supposed to vote in and protect. I go to Mobley's meets, that was one of the very first places I went when I moved here, loved his father, loved the service, but do your research, gentlemen, go look up things. Brother Perkins, I don't know if you're a church man, but you know what, Proverbs says, "The greedy bring ruin to households, but the one who hates bribes lives." So let that sink into your hearts, and really think about that you have not taken...
Excuse me, sir, are you accusing us of bribe, of taking a bribe?
I don't know, or did you take a bribe?
Are you? I mean, that's what you just said.
Do you have a guilty heart?
I absolutely do not, no, sir.
Do you have a guilty heart?
I do not, but I'm just wondering if that's what you're accusing me of.
I'm asking you, do you have a guilty heart?
I absolutely do not.
Did that proverb bother you?
It did not.
Did the Lord's word bother you?
No, sir, it did not.
Okay, then let it weigh on your heart, sir.
You let it weigh on your heart, sir.
It's weighing on mine, sir, that's why I'm up here speaking, because guess what? I run a business with 200 people.
I do too, sir.
I do research, I look at things, I read things, I don't show up and say, you know what?
I ain't going to sit here and...
I haven't talked to a lawyer, I haven't went and put pieces together, but I assure all of you gentlemen, that we, as a community, will vote you out. We will vote someone else in.
And that's your right.
Well, that is absolutely our right.
Yes, sir.
It sure is, and our right is also to be properly informed, which, I'm sorry, I've been here listening, this is the first time I've heard, I haven't heard a peep about we are properly informed, I haven't heard signage, I drive by that, I don't know how many times a day, didn't see a sign, let me guess, it's hidden up in the bushes, can't see it, you know, it doesn't glow, is that the color issue? But really think about it, gentlemen, think about it, if that was your home, would you say, you know what, let me green light it right next to my house, let me go ahead and put it there? Because at the end of the day, all of you are responsible for this, I understand his litigation, his laws, I understand the three branch, however, we're going to get together, and we're going to sue you, and we're going to get it done, so have a great day, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Van Dever. For the record, I live on that road too, around the corner on 152nd, so I do live right around the corner. Mr. Martin, I believe you didn't fill one out, but I did see you raise your hand, you want to speak to, because that's the last one that I have, was his.
Have you seen the sign?
I never go that way, honestly, I don't, I go the other way. Mr. Martin, name and address for the record.
My name is Dennis Martin, my address is 4240 River Road, Live Oak, Florida. I don't live at this location, but I do have a piece of property, and, but anyhow, the lawyers done informed us that there's nothing we can do about it here, because each one of y'all are liable, if you vote against what he advises you. We understand that, and I wouldn't want to vote, you know, against him either, because I wouldn't want to be sued, but what I would like to do is that, you know, we, us Swanee Countyans, every one of us in this room is Swanee Countyans, and we have to go by those LDRs, we have to go by Mr. Mick's law, his rules, or we don't get our, we don't get it, we don't get our thing, but that, I got this copy of this LDR right here, and it's a direct violation, you didn't know it, Mr. Mick's didn't know it, he's human, but I, I knew it, when I come to the meeting, I was late, I was dirty, I didn't want to get up here and say anything, I just got off work, clothes, dirty and everything else, I should have known, if the joint had gone, passed the law, passed the rule, and like the attorney right here says, that there's nothing we can do about it, that we got to give them the rules, we figured that the county commissioners had probably the same rule, you know, but like the attorney said, y'all, pass the rule, so there ain't nothing we can do about it, he stated that before we even started doing it, right? All right, okay, go on with that. Why is it, is it, is it against the law to label the sign? Or you don't have enough money to label it? I want to ask that, you know, should you label the sign?
We're changing the signs, yes, sir.
Well, mighty color, the sign's perfectly on, just put it on there what you're doing, from A to R V four.
I believe the format and the color's being changed, yes, sir.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you can do that. All right, all right, next thing, I went up there and I called Mr. Clerk out here, and I asked him to get that lawsuit, that he'll see you got a suit for. Well, the first one was about there, well, they wouldn't let y'all do that, because that was the feds, overruled y'all, there wasn't nothing y'all could do, the feds spent a lot of money on there, you want his money back, so they wouldn't let you do that, but that ain't got nothing to do with this case. Well, anyhow, I got him to pull up the thing about this, what this case, what y'all see for. Well, I would like, I suggested, and I said, one of y'all's taxes, I suggested that he can do it, I would like for her, she don't have to, she don't have to do nothing, just break up, well, if these folks sue her, she gonna have a real financial loss. This lawsuit right here, with this lady not getting laid, I don't see, attorney appointed at the last meeting, that it wasn't by Florida law, somehow could, just sooner or later, they can sue. So, how could, just sooner or later, they can sue. Could sue y'all because it didn't get a lot because he stated that it wasn't, it wasn't Florida law. So, you didn't even have to, what you really required to do it, to make it wrong. I was told it was state statute, I hadn't found it. I've been looking for it. Well anyhow, this lawsuit, I can't even find where the county had to pay on this lawsuit. It cost $20,000. They could do this lawsuit, the person filed it. Well, I don't understand how come, how she was able to do it because she didn't live out there, but that's about the fact. She done. Well, the people that got sued had built that little race track. So, a lot of these crack out and they were, it wasn't hurting nobody. They lost a whole bunch more than that. What I was, what I would like to say, and Vicki did not have to do this, she don't have to do nothing, but go ahead and build it and make all these people mad. Okay? That's fine, she won't do that. But she got to understand she gonna put at least $10,000 per or the law to develop this. So, that's, that's over a million dollars she's putting in there. If these folks sue her, she gonna lose a lot of money. And then, then, you know, if they, they are determined, it sound like. So, what I would suggest, and I can tell y'all, that she's got to be suprised, this right down the road, that's 212 acres or 213 acres. We just leave it down there. It's 6.6 mile and it's not down here by the 70. That would be a good idea. And I was, I was arguing yesterday, I'll go down there and I looked at it and it's got perfect elevation for her sewage to drain down to one end. It would, it's a no brainer for her. It's a no brainer for her. I understand y'all can't change the rule, but if it's like me, you got it, you shouldn't be able to follow them. But I knew you didn't know it, but you passed. Your attorney's done advised you that you can't go against his advice. Well, I wouldn't want to go against his advice if I was gonna get sued. So, y'all, y'all saying the tide. But here is, I was told that it cost the county for this lawsuit. I ain't found where y'all had nothing. I missed the insurance of Swanee County. The vast, Mr. Erick right here, Mr. Mestry, to find it. And he ain't been able to find it. I didn't see an area.
What year was that in?
2006.
2006.
2006, I didn't have nothing to do with it.
Well, just for clarity purposes, that's why I was pointing out, like that lawsuit you're talking about happened in 2006 and the one where the feds stepped in, that was in what?
2012.
2012. So, this board hadn't been sued, but yes, Swanee County Board of Commissioners has been sued.
They paid that.
Right. I would have, I don't have that readily available.
You're supposed to go through it, y'all won't have to pay that on there. Okay?
I understand.
Here's what I'd like to do. What I'd like to ask y'all five county commissioners, how come you hate RVs? Do y'all hate RVs?
I don't know.
I guess not. You gonna put 139 out across these folks' yard? Okay? But you gonna let none of these folks right here have RV on their property? Well, you gotta, you know, if you go in and fill it out, you can, you gotta turn your plans in and then you can have your RV.
Mr., Ms., Mr. Martin, you, we've all heard from you multiple times. I've spent an hour and a half on the phone with you and I understand what you're saying. And the intent of what you're, the road you were going down with not letting other folks have it, and the intent is to try to prevent people from living in RVs. Because where a lot of our code violations come from are all of the RVs that code enforcement officer, they, oh, let me finish. That code enforcement has found out in the woods with no permitted septic tank, no permitted well, no permitted nothing, and then they call 911, sheriff don't even know how to get there. So, that, but, but, that is where we were talking about, the RV permits and knowing where these folks were living at so we could document when they need the sheriff or 911. They know where to go. So, the septic isn't getting dumped out on the ground like we've heard of them.
I would like to see if it does get a petition. They get it alright.
Right.
Get it alright to have an RV for this guy, or this guy, or this guy that's got, this lady's got cancer. They let him go out and stay in it. They can stay it six months and that RV park.
That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing we're talking about, but yes sir.
I'd sure like to see if they can get a right name.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for coming, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis.
Yes sir, welcome sir. Name and address for the record.
22719.
Welcome sir.
I'm not going to beat a dead horse sir. Mr. Morrison, you should be ashamed of yourself. You get paid by this community, correct? Is that where your paycheck comes from, our taxpayers? That's correct, correct? If somebody asks you a question, you should answer it, not say I can't. They're asking you for a simple time limit, that's something you can offer. We paid you, you should tell them. Enough of the RV stuff. What is it, can we do to stop hiding all this stuff? To be able to bring these meetings to our attention on a monthly basis where we can be here if we have an objective? So, you can be educated properly, you be able to talk to these people, you would have known this before this ever happened. So, I think going forward, this board needs to come up with a way to make this available. Other communities, you got cameras everywhere, they post it on television, they can watch it at home.
Yes sir.
And I'm sure we have that ability.
Yes sir. Our, the agenda in the packet is posted on the website for every, every one of our meetings. And it's Swanee County's website, Swanee County Board of County Commissioners. And also, there's an email chain that goes out, I don't see the young lady that's here, but 160 something people, maybe Commissioner Hale, are on an email chain. If you, if you will leave your email address with the county, the lady, the girl at the county office, she will put you on the email chain so you, when.
Again, we shouldn't have to chase you. You should make it available to us. If we get you in here, in your community and you pay taxes, you should have my email. You should be emailing.
I don't have your email address, I'm sorry.
I guarantee you that.
All you have to do, if you, if you, I'm not going to argue with you, but if you will request that you want it, I will make sure that you get it. I just need, because there's some, but there.
I can request it. We have people in this community that can't request it. There's people that don't have internet, there's people that don't drive. There's people that are affected here that don't have the access that I have. You as a city commissioner should make things easier for us to understand and hear it. We vote you in, this is well as we can vote you out. You go get that. We want you to be here. We want a safe, clean community. I buy meat from your place. I've seen you, I've been in your office. I don't understand why we can't get an answer. You guys are paid by us.
Yes sir.
And we should be afforded these without having to fight for it.
Yes sir.
Can we get this on the agenda to make this happen?
Exactly what is it you want? The email?
I want this town that has a tax record in this town to be notified of these meetings in writing of what's going to happen. That's what needs to be done. So, everybody in this community knows. Put a flyer out. How about send a letter out to everybody and make them pick the email? I don't know how to tell you to do it. It just needs to be done.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I picked up on something he said and I like, I think I know where you're going with it, but I think that would, I don't know how we could do that every two weeks for a meeting. That would probably, I don't know if that's a task that we would even have the people to do, but I like your idea and I wrote this down. Is there a way that we can add to our county site? Like when you go in for anything, to get a loan at a bank or whatever? There's a thing you click that says, application, whatever.
Notification.
Notification. Yeah, why can't we have a link there that says, if you wish to receive the agenda, enter here, put your email, whatever and we can.
On your tax bill.
Yeah, put it on the tax bill. Everybody pays a tax bill every year. This is, this is my point. I'm not, you know, I'm not happy with any of this going on and I'll be on the side of the fight.
Yeah.
I wish you guys could turn it around. I wish he would look at the illegal items that they didn't follow for your work. Because I'm sure if he looked deep enough into that, he could find you a way out. Because they didn't put a sign up. They haven't done their due diligence. There is no, I don't know why you're talking that you have to get a permit before all these surveys are done. That's my.
No, no, I was talking about the septic and the, he was talking about.
All of that needs to be done when they brought this project to you. When that project was brought to you, that should have been in the folder. I've been in 100 of these meetings. I've been in the mobile home business for over 40 years. We own three parks ourselves. I'm not happy with this park going in. It's going to bring drugs, it's going to be crime, the fire department's going to have to put up with this, the police department's going to have to put up with this. This is not good for anybody. And there's going to be absolutely zero revenue for this county. Can anybody dispute that? What is this going to bring to the county other than this primary process? Nothing, right? About Mr. Attorney? This is going to bring us money? It's not bringing us nothing. It's going to cost us money. So, I mean, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I just think that they should stop here. And we need to figure out how to make our citizens more informed of what's going into this community. It's going to make every one of you guys look better. I mean, if you guys are coming, thus ask them.
I don't, I do not disagree with you on everyone should be able to get it, finding the ones who want it and how to get it to them. That's going to be the task and we will do our best to get that. I mean.
If you put that, he actually seems to be interested in it on.
Yes sir.
And he was.
Don Hill.
I appreciate you.
Well, and what she said, and maybe we have done that in the past, maybe had the link there, but also when those tax notices go out, maybe we can put it in there.
So, that would go out, those will go out in October. So, maybe in October, we can ask the property provider to include a flyer that says, hey, if you'd like to receive Swanee County's Board of County Agenda.
Hook that up.
Put it in.
I'm sure he will.
If we can help him facilitate that, we will.
I might have to bug it in here myself.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Ms. Boy.
No doubt about it. Appreciate you.
Thank you for coming, yes sir.
You know, the impact that is for the county to do that, the impact it's going to be for men and the [inaudible].
I'm saying. Yes ma'am, welcome.
And then Parker to keep it 46120th Street. Right now, this is an exercise in futility. Attacking our county commissioners personally is getting us nowhere. We need to join together. I'm going to start a Facebook page called Dowling Park RV Park Opponents. And it's a place where we can get together, share information, and we can get together to start our legal rights. We can hire an attorney, we can all get together and work as a group. I think we understand, they're humans, they've done what they thought was right, they didn't know, that we didn't know. So, now it's our job to move forward with our judicial options and move forward. So, I'm going to start that Facebook page. Anybody want to join in? It's where we can share information.
Mrs. Parker, thank you.
It's going to call Dowling Park RV Park Opponents.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Anyone else from the public? Ms. Donald. Yes ma'am? Name and address. Name and address, Ms. Donald. I know you know the drill. Yes ma'am? Thank you.
I appreciate talking to y'all frequently.
Yes ma'am.
Oh, the mic. Will you hit the mic button? I think he accidentally turned it off for pulling the plug.
You're not my husband, are you?
You'd have some decent.
The only one who didn't call, returned my call was Mr. Perkins.
I did.
Now, the reason that I called was to apologize.
Yes.
And to thank you for listening to us last time.
I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay. We are going to have to sue. It's in the works, we know it. But I want you to think about two things, please. And this is very important. Lake City Reporter. Hamilton County, Lafayette County, reporting River Bend News. Why can't Swanee? I get River Bend News, I don't care about Lake City Reporter. Okay? That's number one. And the other one, I just damn well forgot about. No, no, I really and truly, excuse me, that wasn't nice. You must, you guys carry a lot of responsibility for us and it's important. And I'm not afraid of calling you, I'm not afraid of talking to you. Leo knows me really well, Travis knows me. Y'all are going to get to know me better. So, I'm afraid of, because an old retired woman has nothing better to do than give you a hard time. I want you to make sure that you cause, have a cause of action for checks and balances for planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, or you have to give them more tools of what they need because they are the ones who've made you look bad. We have found so many holes in this, it's ridiculous. Now, if we're able to sue, I'm hoping we can because I don't want it, it's next to my property. I might have to put a lot of chicken manure on it this next year. But y'all know what I'm saying. That was for my grandchildren to build their homes and now that has depleted the property value and my grandchildren, I'm going to be expecting a great grandchild soon and they're not going to build next to that RV park. But I'm done with that. I just want you to give them the tools necessary or give them, or have a good checks and balances against this planning and zoning because they're the ones that are the heart of the matter. And they're the ones that are going to determine whether or not the Board of County Commissioners gets sued, okay? That's all I wanted to say tonight. And I know everything else is, you know, a dead horse and we know where it's all going to from here. But if anybody wants my phone number, let me know, I'll give it to you because like I said, you know, we're, unfortunately, having to go forward with it.
This is being recorded, so I don't know that you want to say it live, but it, yeah, so you might want to say it proudly, no telling who would have it, but I would, that's up to you, but.
I'm not going to say, I'm not going to give it to them, to everybody.
Oh, you can give it to anybody you want, but it'll be on the worldwide web tomorrow. So, I just warning you of that.
I don't need my ex calling me or anything.
You said that, not me.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ed. Anyone else in the public? Real quick, yes sir.
Can we, 22177 Lancaster Road. Can we put, like, just for instance, one question. I know you guys don't do it because years ago they did that. I think it was about 12, but maybe 15 years ago they did a, they wanted to do a mud bog about 12, but maybe 15 years ago, they did a, they wanted to do a mud bog next to us on River Road, Corner River Road and 250, and that got shot down. But everybody got a letter in the mail. People whose houses above the floor.
That's the lawsuit Mr. Martin was talking about. In 2006, the county used to do that, and they missed the landowner in 2006. That landowner missed their letter due to human error, probably. That person sued because they were left out. So that's, and it's not a Florida statute requirement, so they were doing it above and beyond. They missed somebody, so then they got sued in 2006.
The signage is not working, though, Travis.
I understand. We have been talking to Mr. Morrison about maybe reinstating that and how to not miss anybody.
The people that live on, abut that property can tell the rest of the people, like, you know?
Yes, sir. No, I understand. And we have, we've asked him about looking into that for us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else in the pu, yes, sir. Welcome, sir. Name an address.
Modus operandi 1458100 South Livo. I really encourage seeing all the heads in here. It's unfortunate that it took this to bring y'all here. I'm at most of these meetings. I'm not up here to offend y'all, but this is important, what's going on here. I understand it affects the people's lives. Actually, because I come to these meetings, I saw that coming. I tried to reach, talk to the people, tried to reach them on the phone, Google. I didn't drive out there, but I assumed that something was going to go on. But the point I wanted to make, these guys up here are human, and I voted heads at every one of them. Ever seen one of them sitting up there? And that one. All right? And the reason I am, I do, because I come to these meetings, almost every one of them. And guess what? Their stuff goes on as important or more important at every meeting. I've never, the only time I've ever, ever seen this many people in the room is when the garbage price went up, all right? And they had to have it at the Coliseum. So that gentleman asking, I've only been in this county, and I know them special. I'm just a common guy. But I read in the newspaper some stuff, and it concerned me, so I sought out how to, how to get the information. You know, y'all judging these guys up here, and I've judged every one of them too, and harshly. And some of them deserved it. Most of them did. But they, they're human too. And y'all are just as guilty as they are. Y'all complicit in this problem too. Y'all weren't sitting in this room. Y'all sitting in this room, y'all had Ms. Mandy, if y'all's email was already on Ms. Mandy's email list, like mine is, and I know, I can point out who's in this room is, you'd be aware. You'd have that agenda. It wouldn't have slipped through without, I was here and watched it. And I said, I was thinking too, wow, nobody's here. Nobody cares that they're building, especially the people that's touching that property.
I believe I asked the question, didn't I?
You did.
Yes, you did.
I believe I asked the question. Did, is there anyone here?
Right.
I asked Mr. Meeks, has the sign been there? Yes, sir. It's been there for 12 days. Okay, that complies with Florida statute? Yes, sir. Hold on. Then I said, I believe I asked him that question. Also, it's like, well, did we advertise? Yes, sir. It's been in the paper, met Florida statute. I was like, it's okay, because this is in my district, and I haven't had the first phone call for or against or anything. So I just want to ask the question to make sure that was there. Is anybody here wishing to speak? I asked in that meeting. We heard from no one. So again, I apologize that we didn't know that they didn't know, you know? But the question was asked multiple times. I'm sorry to interrupt, Ms. Klepper. Go ahead.
I just encourage y'all, don't, don't do the human thing, and once this gets over, y'all quit coming. They could, we could show, we could go to another bigger room, all right? I'd love to see it, because then I could take it a little easier. I read every agenda. I get, there's two of them, by the way, two email in this. Get on the one that you get the full agenda packet, similar to, not, I don't, I don't think we still get what they got, which we should, but there's two email lists. Get on both of them, in fact. So you could go back to the backstory and read the back papers and understand. Get up here where you could help these guys and do what y'all doing tonight. Y'all, like the lady said, it's too late now on this, and y'all could do a lawsuit. Maybe you win. But also, if y'all know this Mr. Prater, I recommend, if y'all know her well, and maybe y'all could, the one fellow talking about moving it to another location, maybe she would change it on her own, maybe. I don't know. But please, y'all don't just let this hot thing fuse out and then quit coming. Stay with it. If you want to know what's going on, get on the email list, show up, care enough to read all the papers and help them.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please, name an address for the record, please, sir. Welcome.
I'm Mr. Ryan Campbell, 12689225th Road. I live by Mr. Knowles and his family. I can attest, I drive by that property four times a day at minimum. The only signage that was there was the four-by-eight sheet that someone painted a sign on the No RV Park. There was no legal signage, no nothing. We received nothing in the mail. And us, the younger generation, I think I'm probably the youngest one in here, we don't get to pay for everything. You know, like a lot of these other folks do. We rely on social media and whatnot. Some of us on YouTube. I do know you guys have a YouTube channel. But that's a load of crap. You know, I got out of the military, bought property out here to raise my kids, and now I got to worry about, you know, all the crime and whatnot. And Mr. Sam and I have had several conversations about that stuff. So I just want to say that. And I'd like to speak with you and Mr. Morrison after this meeting.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
You need 15 seconds?
I'll give you 15. Come on. Since you were nice. No, I'm fine. It's fine. Go ahead.
This is for you, my brother. 173, Section 320 defines an RV. An RV is defined as under 400 square feet. This includes park models. Are any of you familiar with a park model?
Yes, sir.
Park model is set permanently. It's made for full-time residents. Are we going to allow this in that park? This is something that you should look into, and you can block it. And if you give them guidelines, that should be part of the guideline. This is not going to be a permanent residence, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, well.
I think, Mr. Meeks, correct me if I'm wrong, park models are not allowed in Swanee County. Is that correct?
They are allowed in our parks.
They are.
It's a state law. You've got to be, you've got to be proactive to stop it, because it is state law. And I'm an installer, and I can install it anywhere I want. I'll find your downy to install it, but I prefer not to, and I'm not going to do that. But I would like to see the blockers there. The Keys have accomplished it by going under the HUD, and they've taken theirselves out of the state installation laws, and they've gone under HUD, which is federal. And you could go into those statutes in HUD, and you can bypass that and stop it. And normally, I wouldn't tell the city council this, because I'm into business, but, not anymore. I'm retired. But that's one major hurdle that you're going to hit. The other one is just a stupid thing I don't understand about the concrete on the, on the streets for the driveways. Y'all know concrete's tough, asphalt's soft. You're going to be repairing roads next year, year after. That's a bad move. It should be asphalt going off the roads, not concrete.
You're talking about the driveway aprons?
Yeah, the driveway, that's, that's ridiculous.
What was your last name again?
Knowles.
How you spell that?
K-N-O-W-L-E-S.
I got you.
And I'd be more than happy, like I said, I'm into business. I just want to see if it's.
I may need to pick your brain, so I'll get with you afterwards to figure out.
Oh, I'll give you a card. Have at it.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, I'm, you know, if, if the lawsuit doesn't hold, it's going to go. If it's going to go, I just assume that see, it's best for everybody involved.
I'll be reaching out to you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Knowles.
Yes, yes, sir. And on the heels of that, and the younger gentleman, I just, while we still got a nice group here, social media, he did mention social media, and I know that's something that is the way of the future, whether we like it or not, I know.
Yeah.
But what, what is the, just by raise a hand, I mean, what is, what is the go-to social media? Facebook?
I would say Facebook page would be.
Okay, not, not Truth or Social or X or any of that?
Instagram.
Instagram. Got you.
All the above.
I got you.
I mean, you could tie it to all the above, and everybody would get it, just like a Swanee page, Swanee city council page, or whatever. And you could reach out to everybody. We're not here to, nobody wants to fight with you. We want everybody to live happy here. We want to raise our kids here. We love it here. We love the fact that our kids go to Halloween, or it's safe at the, at the school. We, you tear up the whole downtown to put on Christmas, a Fourth of July for our children. This is life. I'm living the dream here with my grandkids. We don't need this type of interference. And if you had the input, you might not vote in this way.
I see.
It would amplify everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles.
You're right. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? See none, I will close. One more.
My name is Dale Parker, and I don't think that microphone's going to need me. Is everybody here going to take?
Hey.
It's for the television.
You ha, it's for, it's for YouTube. You have to come up here. I'm sorry. We'll get you, we'll get complaints if we let people speak from the audience.
I really don't need this, but I was a disc jockey for 35 years of my life, so I talk in these things all the time. I'm from Tampa, Florida, and.
Name an address for the record. I'm sorry.
22305120th Street, Livo, 32060.
And your name?
Dale Parker.
Thank you.
P-A-R-K-E-R. I've only lived here in Livo for a couple of years. And like I said, come from Tampa, and all the traffic and everything, plus I have two brothers, two of my older brothers, who've lived here for like 20 years. And all I could hear from them is, you got to come up here and move to Livo with us, because it's just like living in Mayberry. You know, you don't pass a car down the road. You come on down here, and this is where you got to be. So we moved up here. We were here for maybe six months, and we wound up getting hit by the worst hurricane this place has ever seen in 100 years. Pine tree through the roof of my house. We were displaced for over six months. So we're just now getting back to normal. And I don't know if there's anybody here from the RV Park Association. Anybody? Anybody that wants to raise their hand? I know. Okay. But if there was, I don't know what kind of investigation they did before choosing this site. But I've got neighbors to the north of me, and I live approximately one mile from the site. And I've got neighbors to the north of me and neighbors to the south of me that bale hay. And guess what they use for fertilizer? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Chicken manure. All right. And if they spread that chicken manure out all over their field, and they're less than a mile from that property, then would you like to be living in an RV and, and look at your children and go, what's that smell? It's chicken manure. And, and they're going to get loads of chicken manure up their nostrils. So all I got to say is, like I said, I don't know who did their investigation of the property, of finding this property, but it's, it's kind of like a presidential election where something went wrong, and it was an oops. And you say, oops, can't do nothing about it. It's too late now. And you're stuck with whatever decision happened, you know?
[inaudible].
Not mentioning who our president is, but we're, we're stuck with that decision. You know, there was nothing we could do about it. It was an oops moment. That's what this was. It was an oops moment. You know, it wasn't nothing that any of these gentlemen did intentional. You know, they just did what they thought was doing their job. And I too appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Being here.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming.
It's got a slightly different angle.
All right.
It's kind of along with that telephone center. Austin Heaton, 11468217th Road. Rather than appealing to the Five Daddies, what if, like he said, I don't know everybody. I'm starting to know people, but y'all know, everybody, seems like everybody knows everybody. Talk to the, to Prater or Bergs, or whatever their name is, and, you know, ask them, hey, don't do this. Or it seems like they've got a lot of pull, a lot of money. We saw a thing where they got a land use permit for a Bitcoin mining operation, which is, nobody knows about Bitcoin except for a few autists on the internet. But it's just for money. It's just to put money in their pockets. And this is what this RV park will do as well, is just for their, put money in their pockets. So anyways, if anybody knows them, maybe you see them up in the bingo hall or whatever, talk to them. You know, could it be that, you know, there's a higher authority, God's authority? The Holy Spirit goes before us, and you talk to them like a neighbor and just say, hey, we don't want this here. It wouldn't be great. Could, could you do it somewhere else? You know, something like that, because all the appeals and the lawsuits and everything, that's appealing to man's authority, which is, I guess, useful. You know, you're going to have a government, when you get three guys together to buy a pizza, there's going to be a government for them. So I realize that happens, but that may be a weird reference. But anyways, if any of y'all know them, talk to them. I mean, talk to them and say, hey, don't do this, or could we do this somewhere else? Or, hey, this is going to have this effect, because, I don't know. I think that might be more effective, especially if we pray about it beforehand. The Holy Spirit goes ahead of us. You know, I had, not to get into any, too many details, but I had a rough spot in my life, and I had brothers come alongside me. And one brother came to me and confronted me with my issues. And I, yeah, go away, go away. Then he went and got another brother and brought him together, and confronted me with my issues. And it was a heck of a lot more powerful, because they were both praying beforehand to get to my heart. So anyways, maybe if we did it the biblical way, where we go to a brother, talk to them first off, and then if that doesn't work, bring another brother. And then if that doesn't work, then bring the Five Daddies or whatever. Let's, maybe let's try that. Again, I, what the talk I said, this is all on our, on us, you know? Every time they change the law, they can't tell every one of us. It'd be ridiculous. So it's up to us to, to figure this stuff out. So, you know, we pray ahead, ahead of time, and, and love on these people. And as much as I want to, you know, call them grabblers or whatever, that's not the case. They're human beings, just like us. So let's talk to them.
Thank you.
Maybe that would help.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? See none, I will close. Public comment. Next item on the agenda, I believe, is item number 18. Any additional items, Mr. Scott? Administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Couple things. DOT has reached out to us. There's some conversation a while back about the city's annexation south of town toward Bass Road. They're willing to do a intersection control analysis. If we'd like to, that'd be at 129 and Bass Road. We just need a consensus that we're okay with the DOT doing that. I think it'd be a good move to get them to study that intersection.
Yes, sir. So I think that the question you're asking is that ice, is that intersection control evaluation?
Right.
So guys, consensus from you guys, allow DOT to do that analysis on Bass Road and US 129 intersection to see.
Sure.
What the traffic impact might be for that development at the city's annexed in, which would affect our roads, which, because Bass Road and the Walker extension is our county roads. Y'all good with that?
Yeah.
You got a 5-0 consensus, Mr. Scott?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hale?
On the heels of that, just something I was thinking about when I, when I found out that passed and all, the study we need. But I, I would really like, and we don't do enough of this, I'd really like to see the school board, ourselves, the city board, go to the Coliseum, have a workshop. I mean, that's kind of a, another big thing that's going to be going on in our community, and just, you know, have input and have everyone involved in that. Just have those discussions. And again, it's not our project. I get it, but, you know, if, if they're willing to work as partners and, you know, all of us work together, again, we know how crazy it is out that way.
Right.
Not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing. Just want to make it a right thing, whatever we do.
Years ago, the statutes required us to have a meeting among the city, county, and school board. I forgot what the, we called it, but we, all the different agencies went, and we talked about what the impacts were, what the needs were for school expansion and such. So, but we can, we can reach out and see if they have interest in that also.
Yeah, and I'd love to have DOT there, water management, you know, health department, et cetera, who all needs to be part of those conversations, you know?
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Mr. Scott?
The, we've been doing some, Shannon, going to a class on FROC. That's a process and how the state helps us get our money back quicker from our, from storms, from FEMA. And through that process, we're learning, you know, post-storm, kind of some things we need to do better. You know, there's, you know, procurement, you know, how we, the management of the resources that we received. But we'll be bringing to y'all in the next several months, different recommendations on some procedural and some policy changes on some of that. So just want to give you the heads up on that. We'll give you more information as we go. Just a shout out to the, all the staff in the county that, after this last heavy rain and heavy wind, they were working night and day to try to get the roads opened up. And we get calls later in the evening that we got another, another tree down. And just appreciate their work out there in the dark and what they do to help us get that opened up. Something we just heard about recently, there's a restaurant interested in going in at the 13675 interchange. Currently, we have the utility stubbed out across or under 136. So we're going to be doing some studying, seeing what it's going to take to get more infrastructure going toward the business, so they can tap into it, meaning with those. But it's good that there's actually some other things happening on that north side, northeast side of interchange. So just want to give you the heads up on that. Partial recreation is closed. They did some of it before, but have been asked by game and fish to close some of the boat ramps. We've got Golliman's going to be closed. Roy's already closed because of the no wake zones. The idea with that historically has been if somebody needs access to the river, we can grant that. But the idea is to get, keep people off the river, so it doesn't cause damage to homes and property as people going up and down the river. That's, that's enough for tonight. Thank you. Any questions for me?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for me?
No, sir.
No, no. No, sir. So that was item number 19. Item number 20, board members inquire, request and comments. Mr. Perkins. Commissioner Perkins, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just want to say thank you, Mr. Broder, for being here tonight. And I may mention about him, his class, he did an awesome job in teaching them the Constitution, and anyone that, that liked to, he have a free class, and he did another in-depth study about the Constitution and things there. Very, 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 very informative. So I enjoyed it. Thank you, Mr. Broder. And again, Mr. Scott said about the storms, I've got calls on roads, and they, I thank you for the department, getting that road department getting out and repairing those, those roads and removing the trees and branches. They did an awesome job. And we, just grateful for our departments, how they work together in combating this problem we have. And also to all of our citizens and all constituents, thank you for coming out, showing you, because your care and concern for being out here. You know, this board, we try to do the best we can, and department, zoning department try to do the best they can. And it started, somehow this kind of got under, snuck under the rug, however it may have done, whatever. But we, we just try to do our best, and to make sure that everybody is satisfied. So thank you for just being here and voicing opinions, and we just well know and well taken in. And I hope you have a blessed, blessed time of going back home.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Mobley?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and keep our pastor, Wes Stansley, in your prayers. He's still battling his cancer. And I'd like to apologize to the folks about the RV park as well, for if y'all was not informed or to sign or whatever, but not we voted on it. We, we had no idea. But we have turned one down before, because our constituents didn't want to come in on 129, and we voted against that. and we voted against that, but they had called or come that night, but we had no idea until it was over. But we'd like to apologize for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mobley. Commissioner Hale?
I just echo everyone's words, and I do appreciate everyone coming out, I appreciate Mr. Moses saying what he says, he's right, I mean, we, we need to do better, and I think we as a board have got a lot of great, the last meeting and this meeting, I've taken more notes than I have in probably three months, and I mean, it's, it's, a lot of it's personal concerns, but a lot of the things, I think we can do better, and that's, and I appreciate the folks that say we're not perfect, because we're not, we make mistakes, but we learn from those mistakes, and if we don't, then, then you need to send us down the road. But I mean, I just appreciate everybody, and I know everyone feels strongly about certain things in life, but I just want to mention, a good friend, a good employee of mine for 15 years, Friday morning, got killed on his way to work, and it's really affected me, but these things we're dealing with here are minute compared to life, and preparing ourselves for the afterlife, so we need to think about that. That's what's most important to us, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale.
I have nothing to say.
Commissioner White. Um, I'll just say the same thing, I mean, I've apologized to you a couple of times, I've apologized two weeks ago, I'll apologize again, I'll keep apologizing that I didn't know that you didn't know. Commissioner Mobley said it, Perkins said, everybody, everybody has said it, you know, you learn from your mistakes, and we didn't know you didn't know. We've taken some notes, as Commissioner Hale said, some things we can improve, and I think that, you know, as a person, that's, that's where you learn the most, is from mistakes you make, and you try to do better the next time. We're all human. I've been attacked personally, I've been cussed, I've been threatened, I've been, you name it, it's happened to me in the last month. And it's all because I didn't know you didn't know. And I apologize for that, we are human, so I'm sorry. That's, I mean, I'm sorry. So, at the end of the day, hopefully y'all will forgive us. I can tell you, like I said before, the five guys up here, you won't find anybody in Swanee County that cares, that cares more about Swanee County than the guys that sit up here for the pay that they take, to take the threats and the accusations and the personal attacks that you take, because it's, it's rewarding, but it can also be very challenging.